Yeah, he's the business coordinator.
Oh.
I think he gave the information to Roxy, because Roxy said, yeah, I'm sure who actually put it on it, but it would have come from him.
I think we should.
Doesn't seem clear during the charge of doing the assignment.
So just require me.
How do you all?
How do you?
You have a word on that. You have a lot of.
If it's the Roxy and Food Festival.
Yes.
You can have a diversity day or something.
Jesus.
Yeah.
No, I have good kids. The same way? And I have good kids on my man. We did set the chat after me. It was respect, I respect you, you respect me, we get along good because it's not about me being in charge, it's about me getting into a process.
That's it. We're proud of you, I don't think I could do it.
I must just get good kids, because this is my 12th year, and when I tell you I have kids, and if you incidentally laugh at it in 12 years, I will not regret that much.
Wait, no, it's very, yeah, it's your spirit.
Kids can sense structure and.
Yes. But also, I speak to my parents and.
Do you hear me? Yeah. Gary. Ready, yes.
Uh, Paul Orner, Borough Council meeting is September 10th, 2024, it is 6:34, it's called that. And, um, um, please turn off your cell phone before inviting and announcing if you're using recording device. Public comment will be limited to five members, first to facilitate others and business needs, and just let her write out the borough in straight line and. Um, we're gonna begin with the moment of silence and be closed with allegiance. Um, I would like to dedicate this moment of silence to Charles Burschiers. Um, Charlie, uh, was a, uh, uh, friend, um, a neighbor. Uh, a borough employee, um, dedicated to the borough, um, he's a mentor, uh, he passed away in August 18th. Um, he would be greatly missed, uh, by me and, um, most of the, uh, the borough council. Uh, more importantly, he was a dedicated, uh, husband and wife. And, uh, uh, the borough is not, is, uh, in a worse position without that for sure. Uh, he was monumental in getting experience.
Charlie, Charlie gave everything he had. Literally everything, when he should have stopped working, he did it. And the doctor said, keep doing it, because it gives you something to do. And he did it right until the end, Doc lets him. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on a mission under God, indivisible, and every being has us.
Uh, before we move into the local, uh, Vivian Unstagger has requested, uh, telecommunication to me, uh, I'm looking for a motion. One second. Yes. And I would like to give the call. Alrighty. Uh, do you have any local?
Uh, yes, um, Vivian?
Yeah.
Thank you. Hello?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
Seth?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Vicky?
Here.
Tony?
Here.
We have broken his absence. I'm here. Uh, Son Grims excuse. So Sir Walt Hill?
Here.
And Mr. Brownman, uh, Andy here, excuse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, now please, we have an executive session, uh, tonight from 6:00 to 6:30 to discuss, uh, personnel matters. Uh, we'll open before for public comment on agenda things. Alright, seeing done, we can move on. Uh, for a little minutes, assuming, uh.
Did she send them by email? Because I don't have them in my bucket either.
Did? I don't know, Sonny finished?
I don't know that she finished it.
Um.
If you didn't get them by email, she didn't finish them before she left. So we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to pick them up next month if trying to.
Yeah. Um, looking for a motion to postpone.
Postpone.
Tracy, you have a second to postpone too, guess me. Alright, all favors say hi. All those? Right, so move. And then, um, gorgeous, what's happening?
Thank you, um, just real quick, we have really no action items tonight, uh, because everything that we've asked before, we're working on. So they got this, uh, street sweeper out, uh, recently, uh, we're having still some water flow issues. Uh, they're trying to work through that, working with Corvette on that as well, uh, to make sure that that gets taken care of. Um, and then we're, we're starting to slow down on the lawn care and such, so, um, they're gonna be working on getting the winter equipment ready. Uh, in and out, fixed up, boiled, whatever, uh, they need to be prepared. Um, Cooten's on the enforcement, uh, Tom's beginning updates on his activities, uh, staying busy. Um, and we do get emails from y'all, um, phone calls, so, um, I, I just wanna touch base on that. If you send us a complaint, we're, we're not going to follow up with you, like, we don't report back. Okay, so, like, you know, Vicky, if you say, hey, my neighbor's got an issue over here, right? We'll go over and take a look at it, but we're not gonna report back to you if we gave them a fine or anything. Because that's, it's, that's not appropriate. Um, so, you know, we thank you for the information, we ask you to let us know when, when you see things, because we can't see everything. Like, you know, Tom's only got two eyes, you know, I'm got four, so, you know, between our six, you know, eh, sometimes things hit us, we appreciate the input. Um, and then as far as recreation, Joe's still burning his ropes down there, uh, he has, uh, changed to his, uh, fall hours. So where he was coming in, staying a little bit over in the summertime, now he's moved it back a little bit, so. Uh, 10:30. So what he's been tasked with doing is getting the rest building cleaned out, going through those boxes. Um, he went through, uh, a lot of boxes, prints one of these past week, uh, month. And try and identify what they are so we know where, but. Uh, that building was kind of a catch-all for a lot of years. So if it's something we're not using, it's no, no value, then, you know, we need to get rid of that. If it's something of value, we're not using, I'll bring it to you, and we'll give that solution here. But most of the stuff we're, we're looking at down there is either equipment that was stored or paperwork that was just running on the stacks. So he's been working on that, he's been trying to put together some events. I've also tasked him with, um, coming up with a list of events for next year. And, and some pretty low budgets for that. So, so we are working on that. I do thank, uh, Vicky and Tracy, uh, for working with me, and I know it's not easy sometimes. Joe, Joe's a little different person, but he's got a good heart and he cares for kids, so, uh.
Is that a seasonal position or?
No, no, that's year-round, because we'll have events all year. And once that building opens up, then we'll be having events inside. Well, he's, he's gotta work the, the plan now.
He's Monday through Friday?
Yes, he's probably Monday through Friday. Well, we just got his office set up this, this month, uh, I went in helping with that. We are working on the camera system that is apart, so he's working on that. Um, we didn't have eminent service down there, so we got Comcast in. But now they're thinking there's a problem with the line runs from the box to the building from construction strike or something when they were doing the part. So that's where we're at now, and we're trying to get the system back up, so that we can cloud, say, cameras, and then anybody can access. Do that separately. So we don't have to be here, I can give Lieutenant Anderson a code, and he can just, wherever he's at, log in and see the cameras. I didn't say we'll be in charge, we're just, we're gonna give them access in case they need it. Instead of, instead of running them out here, running an officer out to the building, to sit there and look at it, they can sit in their own office, pull it up, and. It'd be a lot more convenient for them, and they'll, they'll be able to be a little more efficient, so.
I have one more question, uh, or statement, I should say, um, we were discussing about people knowing about complaints. I'm going to, uh, almost assume that is because they emailed, I sent it the weekend. I never asked for any exact what was done to anybody, but if I sent an email, I do expect a response that this has been handled or we got it, whatever, thank you, something. I mean, that's just common courtesy, never did I ask what was done to anyone, and I would ask them just if it was addressed, and he's like, you know, they got me. That's just common courtesy, and I would ask them, thank you, that would be done for most people. I'm sure, look, I'm sure people get emails from Fox, I mean, something, uh, that's all I'm asking, is just that we say, thanks God, and something, you know? You almost did, but poor, that's what I'm saying, if it isn't the common courtesy of that, that's not what we need to get, not when it actually got, doesn't make much sense. Did anybody else understand what I said?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, because that is actually great, not even spoken, say, I bought your email, thanks a lot, well, talk to Charlie, that's a bad email, but I really appreciate it. Uh, again, I never, I've never said what was done to somebody, but if they find it, it's that, that's not our business, you're right. But it is common courtesy to be responsible, say, we obviously paid the email or taken care of, that's it. Shortly.
True.
Thank you.
So, um, budget workshop, um, I'm suggesting that we have one Monday prior to next meeting, Monday, October 7th, 6:30. Uh, so that we can, uh, go over budget, go over questions you had with the budget, um. I'll give you this, it's not gonna look much different than this year. If you remember, um, I inherited my first year's budget, the second year, we were in flux with how we wanted to go forward. Um, this year's budget was actually mine, that, that I set it up for AI, normally set up budgets. Um, there's a few line items to kick around, but honestly, the revenues are revenues. And AI budget conservatively for revenues, we usually exceed line items by a hundred, over a hundred percent. Um, and then it's a matter of keeping the revenues, which are held in to that conservative revenue, so the lower revenue number, I keep the, the pulse under that. So when this number goes up, that doesn't mean this number goes up, that just means we create a surplus that can go towards capital projects. And then in the future, if we continue to see larger, larger, uh, then we'll get producing tax rate, which is my ultimate goal. You're weird, so. Uh, so I need, um, I need to advertise that budget duty, um, it is public, uh, there is public comment, but there is no action by council that. Except to, to adjourn. So I would need a, a motion in a second before that.
I just have a quick question, do you, um, do you plan on having the draft put out prior to that meeting?
Yeah, I hope to. I already have one, but I just, I just got finished in Adam's. So luckily, we have a two-hour meeting, they're good with their budget, they're gonna advertise that next week. So I don't have any more budget meetings over there, so now I'm concentrating on this.
Uh, does time work, everybody?
Yeah.
Alright.
I want to. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
So you think, the only thing I'm asking is, he thinks, uh, like, the budget is not about money?
He said he will have a draft, uh, in our hands prior to that meeting.
Oh, okay, well, so long.
As soon, as soon as I have it, and I'm comfortable with it, I'll get it out.
Anybody else? Um, I have a motion, alright, I need to accept the second by Vicky, all favors say hi.
Uh, I.
All votes?
Alright.
So move.
Could I, uh, just ask, I'm assuming since it's a budget workshop, and you're a little business, uh, you probably don't need your solicitor there for that expense, so. I'm okay not to come.
You have the night off, sir.
Sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, generally for those meetings, just have counsel there.
Yeah, yeah, it must be.
And then anybody in public wants to come, they can come. But I can't, I can't hand out copies to the public until we vote to advertise. So if we go over it in this night, if we work through it, if we're happy with what we've got, we can go the next night, we can advertise it. And then we've got a 30-day review, then I can give it. And that's, yeah, that's what I'm trying to coordinate, because I want everybody to have time to work on it. But luckily, we, we have the same group, so it's not gonna be very dissimilar from last year.
And, um, it's good that we have this workshop meeting, because the next meeting, we're gonna have double reports, I'm gonna add on two. We'll have two zone reports, we'll have two sets of financial, Sonny is in Ireland right now, um, so Tom didn't, it's Sonny report is bigger than me. Uh, so we have two zone reports and two sets of financial, that's very funny.
Alright, any else?
It's up to, thank you.
Uh, well, I see nothing to report on your end, but that you have something for the good order, and.
Well, it's not that, it doesn't say that there's no reports, so there's no progress.
No progress that way, correct, okay.
But what I do have is some updates for you on things that I have been doing, so that we know. Um, first, I wanna talk about the ICHN company sports complex. I want to let you know, I wanna give kudos to, uh, Dr. Bolton and to Jason Brenneman, um, uh, for their coordination, uh, in working with land. Uh, it was recently changed, they changed the size of the building, and some other, made some other engineering adjustments. Um, I've been working with their attorney, uh, to develop a developers agreement and a post-construction stormwater management agreement. Uh, post-construction stormwater management is important, because that's when, um, uh, it's responsibility of the developer owner to manage the stormwater on the site without the oversight that you have during construction. And so we want to make sure that's in place, and that everything is, is, uh, following best management practices, uh, so we're working on that. As well as the developers agreement regarding how things move forward. Um, the second thing that we're working on is, uh, with ICHN company, is related but not same, and that has to do with constructing the public works building, they're taking on the existing public works building, uh, they're the the, uh, winning bidder. Um, and, uh, in conjunction with, um, uh, hearing in another case, uh, I met with, uh, uh, ICHN company executives and their council. And they agreed principle to construct, uh, new public works, what they put up per payment. So they receive the proceeds, the borough receives the proceeds, and sell the existing public work. That has to be a little bit tricky in terms of how you bid the project and that type of thing. So, uh, we're working now to put together a bid package that we can give to you hopefully at the October meeting, so that, uh, we can get that project moving. So I'm working on that as well.
So you're saying that they were going to build our new public works?
They've offered to, uh, I asked them, because for cash flow purposes, this was suggested by Dr. Bolton, I can't claim credit for the idea, Dr. Bolton gets credit for that. Um, but for cash flow purposes, could we get someone, uh, to construct a building and not get paid for it until we sell the existing building? And so, you know, I didn't know if that would fly, I don't know whether any contractor, or Kinsley or anybody would do it, so I had an ICHN company that's into it. Because if you have one, then maybe you have multiple, right? Uh, so we can put it in a bid package, and see who would like, uh, and at what cost. So, um, ICHN company said, yes, they would consider doing that. So that means, okay, I know we're gonna get these costs to bid, so it's worth it to put the bid package together and see if any others would do it, if so, what prices would be and so forth, so. But we, I didn't wanna try something like that if everybody would look at us and say, you've got it, you've got it. Uh, you know, what, because there's an expense, putting together a bid package, and an expense advertising it, and I didn't wanna do that if it was a hopeless cause. So that's why I investigated it ahead of time, um, I wanted to test Dr. Bolton, that ICHN secret work, if it works, so we're gonna try it. Uh, so of course, the next meeting, I hope to have a bid package, it's gonna have to be structured rather uniquely, um, uh, and it's gonna have to be structured in a way that complies with the borough code, so. It's gonna, it's not gonna be a usual form of a bid package, but I think it will be creative and really could benefit the borough from a cash flow perspective, before they need financing and things like that, save money, uh, on all that type of thing, so. Really creative thinking outside the box, uh, and again, Dr. Bolton's ideas, so, you know, we want, uh, we want to run with it, so we're gonna, we're gonna try and make that work.
One thing I can talk to Dave about is, if, if in the, it could be constructed like an and slash or. Where if, if we, just say we had a, you know, Batman's moved in and said, I'll give you three million for it, just cash, I don't wanna build your building, and we add that into the bid as well, say, you can build our building and give us cash from the back end, or just give, you know.
Because.
You know, would, would that have a bidder come in, I guess it's my.
Yeah, that's right, but it doesn't matter, whoever builds it, it's gonna wait, we're gonna sell that building to whomever, the high bidder is, when we get money, we use it to pay. So it doesn't matter who builds it.
If the, if the, the problem, the problem comes in, somebody who says, here's three million, get out of my building. Where we go, public works, and that. Right. I can't just go.
Right, so we can't, we can't sell that building until we have the new one built, and so that, and it's one of the cash flow purposes, I want to make sure that the builder, whoever does it, would be willing to wait, get paid until we get the existing building sold. So, but, you know, Kinsley didn't agree to those terms.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, uh, like with construction may agree to those terms, you know, there are, there are other, you know, builders that may agree to those terms. And so whoever did, but I didn't wanna run bid package if no builder, if everybody would look at me and say, you, you're just crazy, there's no builder in the world who could do that under those terms. But, you know, we have, we have the advantage, because, you know, as a municipality, we don't, you know, we don't need to worry about our credit, you know, that type of thing, they don't worry, need to worry about any pay, they know they will. And, you know, it's, it's that type of thing, so.
It, it's no money out of our pockets.
Right, that's the goal.
No, and, and then when it's all said and done, we've got a lot of money in our pocket. This falls under something called a community benefit. This is something new, there's not a whole lot of situations, uh, that have used it, the ones that I did find, I sent my research to them all, and I asked them to look into.
Uh, yeah, and that, and that community benefit, uh, agreements and so forth, aren't gonna work under the borough code, but through our own research, we were able to develop alternative methods, and it's good to use, and that's what we're putting together now. So anyway, just wanna let you know, didn't need to take this much time in that part of the report, but.
Well, it's, it's important.
Yeah, it is important, it's very important, because it's saving boroughs so much money, um, and it's providing cash flow, uh, uh, and resulting in cash flow, which should allow me construction and occupancy prior to the sale of those.
I have a comment regarding what's, uh, that kind of makes sense, what you're saying. So we wouldn't know if they would be willing, like, say, somebody like you said, offered this massive amount of money. We still wouldn't know, maybe they would consider doing projects too, so we're putting this work in there, that's for sure.
That's what we're determining now, right, that's, that's why we don't have the bid package done yet, because they have to determine the, the proper way to afford it.
And I think if we would put in, you know, and, and or, like I said, you'd still have a cash on, um, what we did in the first bid, and say, well, you have to enter our lease agreement. You know, what, what kind, how much time would we give ourselves?
Well, no, see, it's too dependent, this is, when, when we sell the building, there's no lease agreement to opt, well, uh, I mean, we put that in the sale.
Right.
Package, but that's it, depending on construction permits.
Right, right.
It's too, it's too dependent.
It could be, it could be from up there, you know, whoever does take it, or who wants to lock it, it could be, it could be anybody, but that we have so much to get the project up, you know, I mean, I was.
No, we're not, we're not, we're not confined by that, so, um, the 45-day settlement, that clock would start after the building is done. Because we wouldn't settle the cash until.
Uh, yeah, is that the state, though, they have to give us?
But if paid in full within 60 days.
Six days.
But, but, but don't forget that has nothing to do with the construction, so, well, all we're doing is we're putting out a bid that says, John Phillips, what is the price you're charging us? Recognizing that you're not gonna get paid until this building is sold.
Gotcha.
Then we put out, once that's built, then we put out a new.
Okay, so they are separate, completely separate, gotcha.
Completely separate, then, once that building is built, we're ready to sell it, then we put it up bid for sale in 60 days, full price. And then, that's when the builder gets paid, and, uh, and, and then the borough gets the, uh, the rest of the money, uh, you know, to put into its, uh, his accounts for future capital projects or whatever he can choose.
Yeah, that makes, that makes everything up then.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, is there, there are two completely separate transactions that will be bid out and advertised separately at different times, they're not connected at all, so we're not saying that the builder is gonna be the buyer.
Right, gotcha, so that's where attitude's at, yeah.
Anybody can be the builder, anybody can be the buyer, it's gonna be an open bid, both ends, okay, and anybody can do it, so it may be, Kinsley will be the builder. And that, um, uh, you know, Joe Smith will be the buyer of the existing building and pay, you know, the high bid, and, you know, give the money to, we'll use the money to pay off the building, and that's that, so.
No, that's a good idea.
Yeah, and we're able to do that without financing it, so we don't have to put a mortgage against existing building or anything like that, which means you don't have to deal with any bond council, nothing like that, it's just a straight-up deal. So that's why, because it's so unique, because there's no security being given, that's why I wanted to test it first, to see if this had legs. Uh, because if, if every builder would say, we won't do it under those circumstances, we're not gonna front that kind of money, you know, for that length of time, and that type of thing, I want to show that. We know we have at least one who's interested, so I thought, okay. So.
So essentially, the, the builder's giving us a loan until we sell the.
Precisely.
So are they charging interest on that?
No, we're gonna say, what are you gonna build it for? They're gonna give us a price, and we're, we're gonna take the low, the low bid, period. What they build into it, maybe they build into the price, the interest or whatever, but we're not gonna see it.
We're not, yeah.
Yeah, but it's gonna be a price for the building, and that's why we put it up the bid, because, you know, ICHN may be interested in doing it. Because, you know, each may be interested in doing it, Kinsey may be interested in doing it. You know, someone else may be interested in doing it. So, you know, we'll, we'll just see what we get. And there's nothing that says we're going to have a provision there that we can reject all bids. So, you know, if, if it turns out that, you know, someone wants to, I don't know what size of building it's going to be, but what is it, ten thousand square feet or roughly? Okay. So if they're going to charge us a million dollars for it, we'll turn it down, you know? I mean, it's that simple. We get to evaluate it and we're in complete control. Start that. So.
Thing is, each community has something, has something that you can capitalize on. And right now for this community, them coming in, yeah, we get taxes from that, you know, whatever. There's other opportunities there. It was like, how can we maximize these opportunities? And, and I think Walt and his team found a really good way that we can do that.
When they come in for, and pull permits for all this stuff, is there an obligation to proceed connected with those permits? And what I mean by that is, they come in, they prep the land, they did all the demolition. They buy up the existing properties around it. Now they've got a very large footprint. And now they off, now they go to market and sell it without ever committing to do anything that they said they were going to do.
Well, you, you have an existing land development plan. So, uh, you know, if they choose to build it, they'll build it. Otherwise it will expire five years. So, you know, that's, that's how the development process would work, something like that. But there's nothing, you know, I mean, they're not contracting with the borough to build it. You know, we're giving them permission to build in accordance with their land development plan. But if they decide that they want to abandon the project, they can abandon the project. And that's true with any development industry, other than an outright contract for the construction of, you know, public.
A resident could get a permit to put up a garage and then they decide they don't have money for a garage. The permit expires, that's it.
Right. I've, I've seen examples where you do, you prep the land, you draw all the permits, you get all the tax deferments. And then you, and you go out and seek investors financing and then you decide not to do the project.
Right. And that's a risk. That is a risk. Good enough way.
Same.
So with that risk, if they decide not to do this project of the sports complex. Does that set the borough open for them, allowing them to put their ass in?
No, that's not the. It's not the, it's the.
It's mixed use, I.
They'd have to get permission for it. You seem to recall, they tried to, they tried to rezone it so that that could happen and then we turned it down. So, and that's a lot.
What puzzled me is whatever happened to the, um, statement and the contract that the school system, this were put together. When they said that nothing can be put on that piece of land other than fifty-five new housing complexes.
They ironed that out with the county.
I beg your pardon?
They, they ironed that out with the county. They found that to be too big, so it's not possible. And I read the document, it's garbage.
What you have to realize is that, that, um, private restrictions like that in the D. Were the same in homeowners associations. Those are not, um, conditions that can be enforced by the municipality. So that's not.
That, that, that we've been in a deed and operating for twenty-first and can change that deed, is the school district themselves, am I right or wrong? Cause that's a deed.
She's saying, yeah, she's saying the school districts are the ones who can change that deed. And I'm fairly certain it's already went over county and resolved and, and made an edit to that deed.
Well, I can say this, I cannot say to anybody in the school district or anybody in the district, you know, did the deed in the first place. They would have to be in.
I don't, I don't see why.
I'm sorry about that. I'm going to say they weren't in the school district. Like when I had the conversation, I don't think they could go.
I didn't research that issue, but, but I'm assuming since it was a condition imposed by the school district. That the school district, which is a position where they can waive it. So I would say that, you know, that's an issue between the school district and the developer. And it's not, it's out of the way of this case.
Right.
I read, I read the initial deed and I stayed in conference and thought, here's the deed that I have. I have copies of the old and the one that was definitely different.
Yeah, but, but, but Vivian, what the deed, did you tell Vivian? Vivian, what the deed said doesn't matter to the council. It's not relevant to our.
And, and, and obviously if the school district had a problem, they'd have done something, but I know. Back then it's.
Sports field?
We're happy it's not kids living there. So I don't think it's, it's, I don't, I don't see a mission. So.
I, I think the fact that it's going to be a sports facility and it was a sports facility previously is.
They, they just don't remember kids. That was why they said it had to, it had to be more special.
Yeah. And then the last thing we're going to report is that, uh, Dr. Bolton, um, spent a lot of time working on the, um, response to a lawsuit filed by Vivian submitting, um, the records from the borough that were requested. So thank you to him for gathering all the minutes, the statements and the deposition transcripts and the other things that need to be produced and sending them out. I worked similarly, uh, for many hours, bringing together responses to the requests for information to be received. And so that was the other major project that Dr. Bolton and I were working on, uh, in conjunction with each other, collaborating. With respect to, uh, you know, our work this, this past month. So that kind of covers what, what we've been doing. Uh, so Walt, you have to answer your questions.
Thank you, Walt.
You're welcome.
All right. Move on to the mayor's report.
No, no, engineer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I got two things to update. No action. I'm sorry. So, uh, the engineers, uh, Lucas and Tom Marshall, uh, met with, uh, State. To go over the MSW audit this past week. So for this, this week, uh, we don't anticipate any issues. There's only one document that we didn't have and that was like the twenty-seven. So we're going to try to track it down, but they said it's not that big of a deal that we can't find it.
So.
That's why I said I want to check these cabinets.
I'm running.
Okay. So, so if we're not miscapturing it over here, we don't have it. But nonetheless, our odds are going to be up. And then project eighty-three, uh, Jason and I have been meeting with, uh, project engineers. With some of the other municipalities. We had a online meeting just this past week. And this is the, the whole, how much are we going to pay for them to move our lines that they need moved, but we don't? So, um, there's some things we're working on. Uh, Jason is working with them. Walt is working on some legal items in conjunction with that. But essentially, uh, just prelim, I have spoken with Tim James. And he is not opposed to combining our efforts, uh, to reduce the amount of work for each municipality. So we are trying to find a way to work through that. I don't have an exact update at this time. But when I do, hopefully it'll be, it'll be another good collaboration. And I'll say what's mine.
I, I talked to Tom about this and want to put it in the wall of your report as well. What are they doing with George and stuff? Every year it'll be finished.
The intersection.
Paving from.
They're so, they were supposed to have already been here.
I know. Oh, that's why I'm bringing it up while we're talking.
And then, and then they started accessing the streets again.
Yeah.
As they were up around Chapel and Olympia. So we had nothing. But, but I would tell them this, about Columbia Gas Project, they're on the other side. It's been sitting for three months, waiting for restoration. So I don't know if it's, they ran out of money and they're trying to push it off to the next budget or what, but this should have been last year.
Yeah, well.
Unfortunately, it's, it's George Street and it's End Dock. And it's out of our, it's out of our hands.
I, I noticed that in our hands. I was just asking, but if anybody from Borough Comment, they spend a unhappy.
Oh, yeah.
I, I just, it's, it's been, you know, three years ago, it'll be finished next year, last year will be finished next year. This year will be.
We had dates in July.
I know. Yeah.
Set that they were.
In September, they've got thirty days.
Well, they, they, End Dock did extend the dates. Till the end of October.
All right. Only have forty-five.
We, we got, we got an email about that, but. Yeah, it's, they're not even double project coming by them either, even if they start today.
Yeah.
But I will, I will see what I can find out.
Right. Um, mayor's report. Um, obviously Nancy Dunn here tonight, she asked me to read her report for her.
She apologizes. I've been talking to her earlier. Uh, she's just, she's still not feeling, you know, uh, for the past couple of days, she's just worked. So she did apologize. She's going to try to make it to the, um, to the event on Friday.
Um, so this is mayor's report. I attended the August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, rural, uh, York County Regional Commissioners meeting. Construction of the new police station continues. There were two chief commendations, Officer Caleb Crean.
Crean?
Yep.
Crean.
And Officer Jacob Yoder. On July twenty-fourth, both officers were dispatched to an accidental self-inflicted gunshot wound. Officer Crean, uh, assisted in controlling the bleeding by applying a tourniquet while Officer Yoder retrieved the metal kit. And proceeded to place a quick clot glaz on the wound to stop the bleeding. Those Officer Crean and Officer Yoder are on their rookie year. The Pace Unit during July twenty twenty-four, uh, the Pace Unit, which is the unit that patrols Route forty, Route thirty corridor. And the hotel and motel area in that corridor had thirty-four criminal arrests, five felonies, twenty-nine misdemeanors. Uh, they also wrote eighty-seven traffic citations, uh, running major July fourteen felonies, one hundred and seven misdemeanors. And two hundred and seventy-one traffic citations were given. Uh, there was no discussion with the charter due to the solicitor not being at the meeting. Uh, some of the police activity in the borough in the month of July twenty twenty-four were as follows. On the fourth, fireworks, West Seventh and North George, a thirty-eight year old male was cited for setting off fireworks in the borough. Uh, sixteenth, symbol assault, three hundred block of East Fifth, a teenager pulled a gun in an adult over an argument on the basketball court of, uh, Hoffman Park. A fifteen year old male arrested and the guy was recovered. Eighteenth, symbol assault, North George Street and Sitsby Avenue, a thirty-four year old friend discovered with a gun during an argument. Victim and defendant worked for a planning. The twentieth, gun violence violations, Schley Alley at West Sixth Ave, a thirty year old male was arrested for possession of a firearm without a carry permit. After he was stopped for a traffic violation and twenty-third, uh, theft, uh, hundred, uh, one hundred block of North George. Unknown suspect stole and blew like a shit. For the month of July twenty twenty-four, there were hundred and seventy-six incidents in the borough, which is thirty-eight less than the previous, uh, than the previous time last year. Uh, for the year of July twenty twenty-four, the borough has had one thousand three hundred and fourteen reported incidents, which is nineteen more than last year's time. And we are continuing to see car break-ins and I want to remind everyone to be vigilant, watching your unattended vehicles. If you have a stair door locked, use them. School was started, please make sure you stop for the buses and keep your eyes out for children getting on and off the buses. Please slow down when traveling the streets of the flow. And once again, if you see something, report it respectfully, Mayor Nancy Brown.
Uh, I, I guess to follow up on the traffic, uh, one officer went out and sent for a couple hours at Albright and Second. And, uh, for the Lebanon tickets and one warning card and, and so, uh, and that was done, uh, they, uh, the Highway Traffic Safety Administration will provide overtime for trouble areas like that. So that was not borough time, that was, uh, someone else paying for that.
And you guys did traffic study there and then didn't, didn't find anything?
The speeding, speeding. Yeah, yeah. That there was not a significant speeding, but there is a significant stop sign.
Yes.
Uh, and then I, I guess.
Did she say Albright and Second?
Yes. Bottom of the hill, there's a stop sign. People tend to roll through. It's an optional stop sign there. Yeah.
And then, uh, I'm sorry.
Suggestion, there should be a stop sign. There is one at the end of the alley down Albright, which will get turned right. But there should be one right there where that, I don't know what kind of business it is now, where they have the teal colored van and stuff. It's coming from the special needs. There should be a stop sign there. I saw it a full lot in some by, I missed where I ended yesterday. All the way to the docks and it was like, very close. So they need a stop too. Cause they need to know that they just scored.
Same intersection, second and, uh, we, traffic coming out behind that building. Yeah, it would around there, traffic heading west one second avenue at Albright.
West one second.
We literally sped around to get.
I'm surprised there's not more accidents down there. Yeah, it's a blind.
I'll check ordinances to see if there's any listing from on there. If there is, we'll put it up. If not, we'll have to do a coordinate.
She talked about people coming around the corner.
For a stop sign?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if you're on Albright, turning right onto Second, you can't see who's coming from your.
I agree, this should be, this should be all through Albright.
And that's one of our, one of the exits out of this municipality. It's crazy. We gotta hope we never have anything, a major going down.
Yes. Uh, I guess currently in the news, Lebanon Cemetery.
Yes.
That they're tipping over tombstones again. So, um, many of our officers did not stop patrol checks there. You know, they, they're typical two places that they're guaranteed to do, put patrol is Lebanon Cemetery and, uh, Park. More hit the park, the cemetery. So one increase that, uh, I think the kid in the spring, or at least our suspect, I think he moved. Because in twenty twenty-three, remember the summer, we're constantly arresting a group of juveniles for criminal mischief, just breaking people's windows and stuff. And, uh, I remember reading a report where he was no longer living in the borough. So who knows if he moved back or whatever, but I'll try and get some results.
I was curious to the northern part of the park, you're down.
That's all I have.
Uh, if I've gone what we've had and said, this was an article in the paper today. And I will be, if I were in writing, did not read the whole thing. So I would say, what I think I read though, is Samantha Dwan made this statement. That she's not so sure if you came this far from children or I shouldn't say children, but, um, it could be also she thinks. Due to like a club, like there's ground issues down there.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't think they determined it as absolute vandalism. They might have consideration of their landscape.
Exactly.
Some circles.
Yeah, yes.
Jake.
Good evening. Uh, some calls for services this month, uh, around seventy-three all over the year. Again, most of those being medical related. Uh, we just put a new guy on, just started, uh, just for that. So he'll be going to academy in about two weeks and, uh, he's about a day or two away for us. So.
Five months.
Yeah.
Yeah. So all good.
I appreciate you.
And a public call for any candidates for emergency management for.
Oh, yes. Um, Dr. Oldwell resigned.
If anybody knows anybody that's in the borough and in that line of work, we'd love to have them. We got some big shoes to fill.
Yeah. Uh, like I said earlier, uh, somebody is in Ireland, uh, so we will not have trainers reports or of course, I think some students do have some to date. And if, we did get one letter, uh, no return address, no signature that said fix, fix seven from George. There might be some profanity in there or something. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, I'm just going to take that kind of under advisement and not, not announce it.
Yeah. And I, I, I would love for it to be fixed and unfortunately it's out of our hands. We want it, it's out of the borough's hands. That's utility and state. Um, so committees, organizations, I have nothing other than what we discussed in the executive meeting.
So, so we do want to announce that. So, so we do want to announce that Friday from five to seven is our first annual diversity day, um, kudos to, um, uh, Councilor Rice, the council announced, uh, working in conjunction with the department to get that up and going, uh, you know, we've, we've had some hiccups, I'll admit, when uh, when we lost Wendy, uh, she was uber valuable in these situations, but uh, we'll get her over our hurdles and when we forward, uh, we've got a great day planned. Um, I'll let Vicky fill you in with some of the findings. Cool, okay, um, so, uh, our, our local representative, Carol, will be here, um, Phil Phillips, right, Phillips Hill.
Oh, oh, oh.
They get me every time, but they curb.
It's not Philip Hill, it's Carol Phillips.
Now, Philip shows.
It's Kristen, yeah.
See, I I thought, I, they were at the park together and I got it wrong, and then it said, nope, not for me yet, so. So, no, we are going to have a um, a diverse uh, offering of different samples of food, um, that will be provided by the borough. Um, Councilor Duncan set up our, our musical entertainment for that, so we thank him, uh, for that input, and uh, so basically, we're gonna have, um, we're gonna have Chris Passatics, uh, represented, they're gonna come out and give some information to people in our community. Uh, and then we have the uh, library, Martin Library, uh, company members, and they're gonna offer some information as well, so, um, yeah, and it, it should be a, a nice day for everybody to come together, try some maybe some different foods you haven't tried, listen to some music, and then get to know the people in your community, and uh, and please, while you're there, understand we are looking to recruit people for that committee, so, you know, we want people that are gonna, you know, come up with ideas and help out with some events. Um, we've got a staff to support that, but like, you know, the day of, you know, we could really use some people to come out and, and help us out, so.
So, for clarity, what time does this event start?
Yeah, it is five to seven in the week on Friday.
So, there's actually gonna be people there with different types of food.
Yeah, like ginger babies is coming over, they're gonna offer a couple of different things, um, we're gonna have a, a different uh, type of food, we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna have some chickens, burgers, uh, I think we're gonna have some uh, chicken fried rice and uh, spring rolls, uh, a couple of offerings as well, you know, chips, pretzels and, and so it is, so, yeah.
Can you reach out to the Asian restaurant we have right here in front of you?
That's just my.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we started in the borough, then we worked outward. So, and and and, you know, it, it's our first foray into this, so we're hoping for a lot of support, a lot of good turnout, so that we can have other events like this in future.
Are there other communities having these types of events?
Um, some do, yes, I know, um, I know Getty Third has a diversity council.
City has one.
Uh, the New York City has one.
So, can somebody maybe go over what exactly go, would go on in the diversity day celebration?
Yeah, so what we looked to set up was, we, we wanted to have, um, information, first of all, we wanted to have, um, different groups there, we didn't get as many groups as we would have liked, um, there were some groups that didn't wanna participate, there were some groups that just aren't close, uh, their offices are out of Harrisburg, so they couldn't make it down, um, but what we wanna try to do is have a representation of all the different diversities that we have in the borough. Um, a lot of that really depends on the people we have giving input, so that's why the committee is so important. Uh, Councilor Rice is our chair, um, and, and she's looking to build that coalition, folks in the community who will give us these ideas and come together and find out what we can do to, to make everybody feel safe and to make everybody know that, hey, we can all get together, we can all fellowship down at the park, doesn't matter if you're this religion or that religion, or this outlook in life, or that outlook in life, if we want, if you're a North Yorker, so we want you to feel welcome. So that's what the, the purpose of this is, the, the food, usually we have food trucks, um, but then you have to pay for that food, sometimes turnouts are a little lower, we wanted people to come out, so we tried to come up with different ethnic foods that people could try, maybe they hadn't tried before, um, so.
So are the vendors on the participants, or are the vendors on us? Cost wise?
Oh, the, the, no cost to the here difference.
Oh.
No cost to the visit.
Does it say that anywhere?
Well, where does it advertise that? I, I just wanna put it on the record, where, where does it advertise so that everyone can know that it's gonna be our first diversity event?
So, so we, we were, um, working on getting it on the website, I got a double check that, um, the sign, the, the big, the big sign that we usually put out on the roadway, um, we were having trouble finding letters for what we wanted to put up. Um, we were missing the numbers for the five to seven, so, uh, Tom Marshall went out and ordered those, we should have him by tomorrow, he's gonna take the sign over. Um, they were trying to work on that Monday, but they, they pretty much.
Well, I, I think you would agree the, the participation and the attendance is gonna be vastly different if people think they're coming and they gotta buy their own food from the food trucks compared to the community, uh, or the boroughs is gonna offer this as part of the event, and we encourage everybody to turn out.
I'm sure. So. I also didn't wanna.
We should have been screaming that from the rooftops.
Well, here's the other thing, I don't wanna sit there and scream it from the rooftops, and we have more people from outside the community come in than we do from here, this, this is supposed to be for our community. Uh, so that's one reason we didn't scream, freeze, come in, you know.
No, but it still should have been advertised for the, uh, citizens of the borough, so that they know, and so how are they gonna know we're gonna have our first diversity event in Northwood Borough, and it's being advertised as a family event?
We also just want enough for three days to tell everyone.
You can have suggestions on that, we can talk about this for four months. And I know, and I, I, and I know, and Tracy, Tracy reached out, and, and she offered to help us with the flyer because, you know, Joe doesn't have those skills. Um, so, you know, people have been trying to help out.
Cause we, our first.
But it's gonna take more than two, it's gonna take more than two or three people.
June eighth, we were supposed to have our event. And that is had to cancel it till September, and now we don't have any advertising, and it's three days away.
That's an issue.
It's.
It's a third iteration, we're supposed to have it almost done in that.
Oh, so it's a third.
Oh, it's really hard to say most of these people can come, these people being at best.
No, that's not what, um.
And so, and so the other side of this is, we don't have social media presence right now. So, people in the community that know about the event could be putting it out there, right?
No.
I mean.
Well, yeah, that's all we have left at this point.
The staff has no way to do that. But, you know, Joe, Joe and I both reached out to organizations, trying to get people to go, you know, that have tables, um, we took suggestions for the food, and then we started in the borough, to use borough businesses, when we couldn't find enough, outside the borough, and tried to find other options, so, you know, Joe made all those phone calls, connections, got the prices, put the budget together. I mean, it's not like we haven't been working on it.
What I can say, yeah, I mean, historically, the recreation committee carried the weight of all these events, and at this point, we've lost half the recreation committee this year, I mean, manpower is a problem.
It's always been.
Yeah, I know this.
It's always been, it's always, always had the, like, people, they usually does, I mean, everybody always gets the, uh, the day of, they pour, yeah, like, throw a mask and stuff, but well, usually always go, you know, the rest of that, rubber, throw that.
And my comments weren't intended to point the finger at anybody, it's simply, we've got three days left, so what can we do to maximize that time and try to get as much word out as we can.
So, so that's, that's where it has to happen, it has to happen on social media, and unfortunately, borough has no presence in social media.
Well, but there are businesses and, 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 uh, organizations within the borough that do have social media. The churches have social media, my, my, I'm on Facebook, everybody, I think most people are on Facebook.
Right.
So, if, even if you want to promote it as a borough only event, there are still ways that we can.
Well, and that's what we need help with, that's, that's what we need help with, getting that out there, now going in the future, yeah, we have Code Red, but twenty-eight people get those messages. Like, it's just, it's, it, that is something that you guys had signed up before I started here, I kept it to see how it works, doesn't work. Code Red doesn't work, so I'm gonna be suggesting we change platforms on that to something a lot better and cheaper, but that's not for right now.
So, on the, on, on your first date, it says, uh, number thirteen, five to seven, Albright, three.
Right.
Is that, is that the diversity event?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's wild, it's a half, why they made a video of the time.
And, and, and now, and now you see. And now, now you see why we have to work on this, because.
I don't think it's a good idea.
Cause some people, so, that's why we work.
Nothing. We're gonna go with whatever we're, but it's not gonna be at the adversity event, because we're not gonna do our first adversity event, and it's half assed, and we don't have people lined up, and we don't have everybody on board, people don't know.
No.
But that's what we're boasting on the board, that's what we're boasting. That's what we talked about for the last two days.
Well, people won't turn out for food.
We're gonna have turnout. Here's the deal, five hundred people show up, we don't have enough food. Tell you that right now, we budgeted for seventy-five to a hundred people, based on previous burn. Cause, cause we're lucky if we get that. Okay, now, if we get more than that, then we increase the budgets in the future, but here's the deal, we haven't paid for this in a day, this is the first time we're paying for it. Otherwise, it's a food truck that gives us a license, and whoever wants food, you go pay ten, twelve bucks, or whatever they got. I've already said that. I already covered that. I said, Chris Passatics is coming out. No, because we couldn't find that, we couldn't find it. We went as far as Harrisburg to call organizations.
Okay, I'm sorry, is there, I guess the question is, Miss One, about, is that, do you could have sent literature that you send out to the residents? I'm not a North York girl, but I'm just curious.
We historically had a newsletter, um, we, our first news, there were a few years where we didn't have a newsletter because of COVID, and we spent a long time to get it back, uh, but our, our first new issue newsletter went out two months ago, a month ago, so we'll have another one go out there this year. Um, and we're always looking for stuff to put in there, so that's a good idea.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, like, cause in the city, they send out some newsletter, I believe it's called that, and they'll have different things that they're doing, and you go, oh, okay. I don't know, I can give you some ideas, things to do, I don't live in North York, I'm just a part of London, so.
So, so one of these things.
Some great ideas.
Yeah, one of the things I was talking about earlier was the Code Red, and the Code Red is an alert system, and we can send messages out to people that send it out. Okay, but the problem is, we've put it out in newsletters, we've put it outside here, we've advertised it, we've put it online, nobody's signing up for it. So, out of eight hundred, some people in the borough that have phone numbers, over six hundred of them aren't getting the message, because their carriers are blocking the message. So, so we can't even get around that unless they download the app, okay, the app is not let alone, it's not widely used, and as its name says, Code Red, it's more an emergency alert. Okay, so I've been tracking the, the, you know, the call calls and everything, how many go through, how many go to voice channel, things like that, if we're not getting what we need throughout that app, so I am investigating a new app. The new app will be cheaper, it'll be bigger, uh, it'll have more options, but it'll also have community calendar.
It's interactive.
So, so you could go one, I, Lieutenant Anderson names, uh,
Savvy Citizen.
Savvy Citizen, so, I, I mean, I've seen your, not calendar, that's, and that, and that's something I'm looking into now. Uh, I've actually just signed up my own for it, and then, when I see how it works, next month or two, that I'll bring it over here. Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna offer something if it's not gonna solve our problem, but I appreciate that, thank you, thank you.
Savvy Citizen is fantastic.
Great, um, we're really moving on to committees and organizations. Okay, good, uh, I see no old business or new business, uh, so we can open the floor to public comment, um, who wants the floor?
I just need, I just need your name for the record.
Um, I guess I will take the floor. Um, my name is Baranita Bex. Baranita.
Baranita, Baranita, B A R O N I T A?
B A R O N I T.
Okay, I want two for all, and the last name is?
Thanks.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you.
Um, I am here along with, um, Baranita, um, and we are here, um, from Lebanon Cemetery. We are rather new coordinators, we wanted to come introduce ourselves, um, just kind of make a connection, because while the cemetery is in the borough, um, we are very aware of the recent ones on at the cemetery, and we are doing our best to, um, find ways to come up to better secure the cemetery and address the issues, um, working with the police, um, hopefully working with you guys, um, and the community, um, at large, because it's gonna take a team effort, um, to make sure that this, this sort of cemetery is well taken care of. So, that was our goal to come here tonight, introduce ourselves, um, ask us any questions, um, Dan, did you have anything to add there?
Um, just also too, if we could, um, I don't know, set, set up a meeting at some point, to kind of brainstorm some things, just so we are, you know, um, bonding with our partnership, um, just so there is continued success at the cemetery, I know we are looking to possibly do some activities there, um, in the future, get some five K laws, things like that, just incorporating it because we are looking to do some other fundraisers, um, for the cemetery, but also, um, maintaining the beautification of all those things, cause it has kind of been, um, it's awful, so we're looking at bringing it to life in the neighborhood.
Oh, also, for the temporary, the cemetery will be closed until the end of the month, and that is for the safety of anyone going into the cemetery, because, um, at this point, yes, there was more damage that was discovered, we are not sure whether it was actual vandalism, or it was just something that, you know, time, weather, whatever the case may be, happened. But to ensure the safety of anyone going into the cemetery, we have temporarily closed it to make sure that we can appropriately have it assessed, know what needs to be repaired, how much, and all of those things, so that when the community does go into visit their loved ones, no one is at risk of being injured in any type of way. So, we have taken, um, precaution in doing that. So, yes, it will be closed, at least until the end of the month.
All right, people on board?
Eleven.
I'm sorry, Darlene, you're lazy.
Colbert, C O, uh, E R T.
I'm sorry, C O L B?
E R T.
Thank you.
Darlene?
Colbert.
So, we did, um, I, I need the staff to put the cemetery closed on our website as well, uh, just to try to raise awareness for that. Um, and then, of course, this past month, we did, uh, work with the cemetery to, to make sure that they weren't getting unduly taxed. Uh, for their.
All right, great.
We worked with, uh, my firm worked with the, uh, uh, Bureau of Tax Bureau, and had the, uh, uh, the cemetery pulled off a perfect amount of tax law. So, that problem should be resolved. Not let us know, but I'm pretty sure, since we represent the world. Pretty sure we got that done.
Yeah, so thanks for welcoming. For saving the new board, has done wonders that night so far, so you guys are definitely.
We're listening.
She's, no, because she usually.
So, Sam is actually, uh, so what has happened is, Sam has actually resigned from the board. Um, she has stepped down, um, because she has some other, she wants to continue the educational pieces, um, with Friends of Lebanon. Um, so that said, we have had some vacancies, and a new board that came on in August. Um, and that said, we'll have our first meeting together, and then we'll be going over some tickets, things that were outstanding, and moving them to the new standing. I know one of them is definitely again, to what you said, the, getting the mapping, and things like that on, on, and then with the security lighting, um, to make sure, and then fencing. So, we are looking into all those things, so we can get that up. Hopefully, we can get the fencing up by December. So, we are looking at that in some light.
It's come a while, wait, last year, I'm sure, looks much better, yeah. I have a question.
Yes.
How, how are the records kept on who you have buried there? Is there a roster that is accessible, so someone asks questions, where is my family member at? Sometimes when you go to the cemetery, they have it, so they know exactly where they're at. They can go right there and direct them.
So, what has happened, um, as we have come on, there has been some inept record keeping. Um, what I initiated was going through all thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-six members, individuals that are referred in the cemetery. And start, began the spreadsheet, um, to know who's actually buried in the cemetery. Um, but also, there is a GPS, um, piece that Samantha, Friends of Lebanon, did start working on. Um, in addition to that, um, we will be discussing a gentleman coming out of Cincinnati, who actually goes into historic cemeteries and does the entire mapping, um, we're doing the entire drone, then we actually three D, looking at cemetery, give, um, stones, all those real funky things that he has on his site, that he really goes out and does. Um, we actually will be probably taking him on to come out and actually do that for our cemetery, because it does. We're looking at the stones, some individuals, because over time, stones move, all the caskets move underneath, things like that happen. So, we do wanna know where all caskets are, um, but we also wanna ensure that stones are where they need to be. Um, if this stone kind of needs some, you know, fixing, we wanna make sure that's it. So, he's gonna come in and go in depth. Um, survey all the mapping, so there'll probably be some activity in the logic, which, you know, at those weekend, because it'll be up in the cemetery, but we're gonna also incorporate that too, an educational piece for the families, just so they can actually see how that actually happens, and they're really going to be doing certain things. So, those are some things that we are looking at. We're also going to be, um, providing that information, we're going to be doing, because Lebanon Cemetery actually does not have their own specific website. Friends of Lebanon does. That said, with, um, we are actually going to do too, is our own website up that will give families and loved ones information that says, if you have deeds, we may not have that information. However, as much information as possible, could you please provide that to us? Our job is also make sure that we do our due diligence to locate certain things. Um, our job now is looking at it from a standpoint of, there, obviously, over time, there has been many individuals, such as when you have board meeting, you know, members, records are inept, records are not kept the right way. Um, I have a problem with that. However, I just got to the table. Um, so my job now is coming from my business section and my thought process, this is what needs to happen. Um, we can't own what they did, but we wanna own what we do.
Right.
Um, and our job is to deliver the information to them. So, my thing is to give them the necessary, and it be very transparent as possible, um, but also giving them that necessary information, because my goal in this whole thing is, in the next six months, we should, um, it's probably less than that, but I give it time, six months, because we have a lot to get done in that time thing. But by then, individuals will be able to go into Lebanon Cemetery, be able to find where their loved ones are, and even, even say, okay, it is Sally buried here. Yes. Um, you know, looking at records also online, they have a lot up there, but it's also looking at what we do have. I definitely struggle with some of the records that were kept that way, but again, I can't speak for why they did it that way, and what could have happened. I don't know that process. My job now is just to try to be, our job actually, is to try to bring together what we do have, and make it accessible for our families. Um, in the process too, I've learned a lot on the whole cemetery, and I think it's pretty cool. It's just interesting how that whole process works.
Is, are you also going to service or Pottersville? What's going on with Pottersville connected to Lebanon Cemetery?
Um, those are some questions that we need to discuss. Um, so I do know, once they come out, I'm going to do survey the entire area, of course. What is what that is, because it's not evidence. There is an area, I believe there is a, I believe it's a church, just like a, a parking area, uh, up to the back of there. Um, we definitely have some issues, um, we're not understanding the water, it may not have been retained well, things like that. So, those are some kind of issues we may have to come out here and talk to you guys about, because we're definitely looking at, you know, because of the, we get a couple more washes, um, we might have some issues there, so we're trying to understand. And then to be an in-depth conversation we'll have to have, because whoever bought that land right there, that's kind of really close and personal to the cemetery. And I don't know who was there. Again, we weren't here at that time, but just trying to get some resolution to that, to ensure that those loved ones, those caskets, and they're not just them in the cemetery, not, not anymore.
That's true.
So, we are looking into a couple of things that are definitely real critical, um, but one for me definitely is records. I wanna know who's buried there, because I was checking out my, my way, but what?
It is a very significant part of history.
It is.
Of North York Borough, and I just wanna make sure that it gets its roses now. The people that are there, the Buffalo Soldiers, the, 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 the small woods, the banks, a lot of families are there. So, I just wanna make sure that, being that it's in North York Borough, that North York Borough respects it, and appreciates it, and we will do whatever we need to do to help you.
I appreciate that. Because we are gonna be highlighting real critical individuals that, we can't highlight all, but we do wanna really get into, you know, some of the underground level individuals, some civil war individuals, the ones that had started, you know, complaints and things like that. We really do wanna focus on that, because we have not seen, I have not seen that though, and I kind of research a lot. So, for us, we do want to really highlight those individuals on our webpages, because we do wanna get to a level that we're able to give tools. And you can have the, um, the placards that are really sitting in front of those individuals. Uh, I just have a lot of different thoughts that I'd like for it to become tradition, so remember.
Also, we are, um, looking for volunteers, um, whether it be information, whether it be coming out to help on the days that we are up there, you know, doing cleanups, um, volunteers, the con, donations, all of those things, because all of those things help us. Um, and it helps the world to make that what it needs to be, and what it needs to be in an honored place where the loved ones can rest when they call in. So, that is the ultimate goal, to make sure that they are honored, to make sure that we are, you know, beautifying it, making it what it needs to be. So, any volunteers, donations, or any of those things, time, and sometimes the story is behind, um, the people that are buried there, because we do not know everything about anybody, my father's, and my parents, and my mother. So, a lot of my family is there, and I got into this because of my father, uh, my father is buried. And through Friends of Lebanon Cemetery Level Company, I was able to finally put a headstone on my father's grave. My father died when I was eleven. His stone was just put there last year. And, yeah, last year. So, that was my story behind that for me.
That's awesome, yeah.
But yes, Samantha Dorm, um, and her group definitely have been doing a lot of footwork. They have done a lot, um, in the community. Um, and now with that, really some things that she has done, but we're going to capitalize off that, but also tighten up some areas and really bring it to fruition. I mean, you know, I drive past her and someday look at, um, so, you know, it's just a goal, it is in the community, but it's also very good on that tour.
You're right, it's it, it's right there.
Awesome. Well, thanks for popping us today.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You would make sure you grab one of the carts in there, and we'll, we'll, at some point.
Yes.
I'm out, I'm out, personally.
Is anybody else, is that?
I was just gonna ask, is there any way you could tell us who you want us to call if you find any damage? Because the last before I saw somebody called Samantha.
Um, you can put ours, us down. Go right now to these addresses.
So, so I can now?
We can all, they can all call.
And, uh, what, I, I guess, if, if we, we're going to, I, I told a, a sergeant tonight to go out, put a flag by each tombstone, just like a land surveying flag, uh, by each tombstone, so we know when a guy's walking through at four AM, he sees a tipped over tombstone, he doesn't know, you know, whether that. And then, you know, if you need any information on which ones were reported or not, maybe I'll call, we'll get them.
Okay, thank you.
No.
In the cemetery?
That is on our upcoming, um, agenda, is lighting and cameras.
Yeah.
To, um, the fencing, the lighting, and the cameras are three of the most important things at this point to take care of. To one, deter, you know, whatever is going on, because we don't know if it's vandalism, we're not, because there's no cameras for us to know. Um, the lighting will all, will help deter if there is vandalism going on, and then the cameras will see everything. But also, all of those things help the community as well, and helps the surrounding houses as well. It's, you know, a protection for them, an added layer of security. So, we're not just thinking about the cemetery, it is the community at large, because we're all invested in it.
So, what do you give to that point? Um, let me give you a contact for the guy, just put the camera to.
Absolutely.
It amazingly, then you can give access to the police as well.
Yes.
And, and you can just, you know, use the cloud, so.
Yes.
Yeah, when we get together, I'll be joining.
Great, thank you guys so much.
We are going to do a, um, it's gonna actually be a three-phase, um, campaign. Um, we're gonna begin that, uh, December, excuse me, um, December to start off, but so now we're trying to decide which ones we wanna put in the first grade, and then continue with the phases. Some things we may be able to go ahead and take care of ourselves, but we're gonna put a lot of it into the phase campaign, so we can go out and get the necessary funds from individuals, in addition to reaching out to the individuals to see if they're going to donate certain things, and or assist us somehow.
I don't, I mean, we had, we had a few incidents. In more rock parks, well, for that part, very dark, and it's gonna sound crazy, but as a temporary, that we use, um, trail cameras, I'm hoping those kind of, if we put trail cameras.
Yes, I think we talked about, but the problem we have is that we thought we saw a lot of it, is we have planted trees that we can put up on. I don't know, again, I don't know, maybe we can talk about that, because we don't really understand. I can tell you, I definitely, I know how to be paper.
And go look.
That's not really, so this is how we can make this money right here.
Um, I know how to put that together, because that's the other thing too, that's what we do, we bingo.
So, yes, if you have the information, we can. Do you know someone that, um, we could talk to that does cameras? That can tell us, okay, does that, what is, or is it just something that we can do, like, if we were at our houses, we can plant it here?
Yeah, you can get them all. Oh, yeah, you just put kids' socks. Yeah, and then you bolt them to a tree, you drill them in, and then walk in front of it, check out the pictures, see if it's getting the span you want, like when we use them. Uh, you know, we do a couple of test runs.
Does it will call you?
It's a trail, a trail cam. And it's like a few hundred, see, deer coming across your trail.
It must be good at the hundred of you. It's got. All right, thank you. We'll try.
Anybody else? Right, um, same then. Um, announcements, the next, uh, well, the next meeting will be workshop, the budget workshop on October, Monday, October seventh, at six thirty PM, and the next regular council meeting will be the day after, October eighth, uh, at six thirty PM, uh, right here at, uh, three fifty E six. Um, I look like a jerk.
I'm not.
Vicky? Second and, Vicky, all people say hi.
Hi.
All those? Simple. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Take care.
Thank you.
Yep.